Okay.
Good evening, this is the Rutland Town Planning Commission and it is March 28th of 2024. Thank you all for joining us. Let's start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. What? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to republic. For which it stands. One nation under God. Indivisible. Liberty and justice. And before we sit down, or if we don't mind standing again, I would just like to do a moment of silence for Fred Nicholson, who wore lots of hats in the town of Rutland and served on this planning commission for a stint as well. So a moment of silence, please. Okay, thank you. First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
We should approve.
Suck him.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Public comment is next on the agenda. I think we just have the McNeils in attendance. Is there anyone else there in the room?
There is not.
Okay. So we'll go down to new business and the subdivision that the McNeils are bringing to us. This is nine at nine thirty US Route four and I think Paul McNeil is is in the audience and ready to take our questions. But first, Paul, if you could just just give us a brief rundown of of what what you're planning to do there with that property.
You want him to come up front, Barbara?
Yeah, why don't you if you want to come up to one of the chairs, Paul, because that way we can everybody, the people on on at home can hear you.
Oh, good idea.
Yeah, you get the one of the king chairs.
Yes, we try and subdivide two and a half acre into two lots. Is it two and a half? Who was that?
Should be on there, Jerry, you should say like.
Yeah, I'm looking for the total amount.
Two point six seven. Ah, so
Two point six seven.
Two point six seven passo with two houses on it. And we wanted to buy into two lots, each with their own existing driveway. And own septic and they do have a shade well.
Okay. All right, seems pretty straightforward. Do you need any other permitting at this point?
I don't believe so.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over.
I just asking, it's all existing items is by the looks.
Existing driveway, existing septics.
Yeah. So I'm going to turn it over to Bill to kind of lead the discussion from here on out because neither Dana nor I have seen the plat. Howard, I think, has had a look at it.
Howard picked up a copy today.
We dropped off six of them last week.
Yeah.
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 That's a couple more six than they to get them. So in looking at it, so Jim, Jerry and Howard all have all have copies in front of them. So everything looked to be that it was there. We have the we have the title. Jerry and Jim, you guys want to go through and make sure we're and Howard too for we're got everything on here, but we have the title. We have the municipality. We have the name and address of the owner and the professional credentials of the preparer. Boundaries are present. The scale is present. Yep.
Yep.
There's no zoning. Proposed division lines are there, streets are there, buildings are there. They're asking for a waiver on water courses. Think is pretty common. Utility easements present. That Alpine Pipeline or is that private?
That's private. The Alpine Pipeline doesn't. Yeah.
No, I don't. I think I think that isn't the Alpine Pipeline I thought was on this side of the road from the last.
It is. I thought it was stubbed out on that right away.
I think I think that the houses might be private, but I think from the last subdivision of the Alpine.
Because the manhole across the street also. But okay, it's but the sewer sewer connections onsite is over there, but they're they are shown on there.
Showing and the backups are shown too.
Water supply is shown. They're asking for a waiver on drainage systems to and connections to municipal, which would be appropriate. We don't have any. Parks are open spaces, other essential features, asking for a waiver on trees.
Can you back up for one second, Bill?
Sure, yeah.
On seventeen, I didn't see anything checked. So that should be circled as a waiver. On my copy.
Yeah, other other central features existing and proposed because there's there's no there are no other ones. So that would be a waiver.
That's a waiver. Okay, just while I get it.
Nineteen should be a yes with the with the exception of the things that are waived.
Right.
And then there's a waiver for contour lines and proposed grading, streets, highways and sidewalks. So twenty and twenty-one are waivers requested. Twenty-two is a yes, it has private sewage. And then waivers for twenty-three, twenty-four. So did we did we need to go into any reasons? Twenty-five is asking if we need the reasons for that.
It seemed to be pretty self-explanatory.
So.
We don't require culverts. I just don't remember. That's number twenty-three.
Three. That's preliminary designs if they're required, but they're these there is existing driveways, so they're not going to be anything required because
Not applicable, right? Yep, got it. I wrote that question down before he mentioned the driveways and I didn't retain that. Thank you.
And then we have that list, Bill, one through eight on the the other side of the application.
That's oh, I'm sorry. Yes, the the pre-qualifying ones too. Yeah. Boundaries and areas of contiguous property owner. Everything's there. Boundaries and area of property subdivided was there, subdivision lines are there. Prepare information is there, the scale is there. Existing features. Everything looks to be there. Yep. There's no improvements, so it is it is a yes because there's no improvements and the location map is on there also. So all of the things on the cover form, Form one are.
Yeah, seven is not applicable, right?
Yeah, seven, seven is satisfactory. So the answer is satisfactory or is satisfactory, yes or no? So it would be satisfactory because there's nothing to actually need.
Okay.
Okay, and this is a minor subdivision. Paul, we normally we need a public hearing for this. So we we can do that in three weeks' time or the three weeks after that. Three weeks would be April eighteenth, be a Thursday evening again.
Yes. That's good for me, assuming, brother.
Okay.
Well. Yeah.
Okay, any any other questions of Paul or Bill on the application?
So you you would need to take action if the preliminary plat meets all requirements. That's an action. We have that as an actionable thing.
Okay.
And Barbara, we go over Form three next time. Is that correct?
Three is only for major.
Oh, major. That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, next time it would be just, I mean, if the final plat is ready, fine, but you you have ninety days from approval to get that, Paul. The hearing is.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just gonna tell him that that's the that's like the the final plat that
Recordable.
Corseau would.
Yeah, the Mylar.
But you have ninety days. You don't have to have it with you unless he has it done, right?
Yeah.
He could have it done. There's not there's nothing in this one we're gonna change, so.
So I can have him have it done for the in three weeks.
If he has it in three weeks.
Yeah.
So if he has it done in three weeks, you can bring it in and they can stamp it and sign it and then it'll get recorded.
Okay.
So we can do the if you want to if you want to plan for that, we can we can.
Yes.
Plan for that. So there's the application fee and then there's a recording fee. I I forget what the record I don't have the recording fee because it usually doesn't does not the other office, but I can get that for you.
Okay.
Send it to you. But yeah, you can. So we would need the we leave the leave the application fee tonight because we gotta do the warning, send that out. And then when you come in in three weeks, bring this will be a recording fee. It's like, I think it's like twenty-five or thirty-five dollars. So it's not.
And check in.
Yeah.
In three weeks with that.
Yeah, the trek in three weeks will be for the recording.
Yeah.
If you're bringing in the if you're bringing in the Mylar, bring that same time.
Okay.
And then we can do it all once.
Mark prepares the.
Yep.
Yeah, basically, in three weeks, Paul, it's a public hearing for for anyone anyone, you know, joining landowners or anyone in town can come and comment. We usually don't get too many.
And if it goes fine, then it'll be approved on in three weeks?
It should. It that's that's a good possibility.
Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions?
I just have a couple. Um. Have you discussed this with the adjoining property owners around you?
I just spoke with the one owner that I bought the property from with the right away next to me.
It might be a good idea to let them know what you're up to here. It's not a serious thing, but if if you don't speak with them, they won't know.
Yes.
And also, it would be helpful in case you do this again to list the butter's owners on the.
I think it's on there.
Oh, it is?
Yeah. Yeah, I think it is, Jim.
Yeah, it's a four hours. We see on that one side.
Okay, okay.
And then on the other side, it's it's Morehouse and they go all the way around. And where the third about the whether we were the fun we own the front house.
Okay.
So we have our three went down here.
Actually, I had the list from the last time this was done. And so I just need to shorten it up a little bit. It's actually pretty easy this time.
Yeah, nine thirty, root four, we see, and then Morehouse.
All right. But that's all I have.
Okay, yeah. Anyone else?
Looks good.
It's at the Howard stamp of approval.
No, no, that's fine.
Is is there a motion to accept this application as as filled out and then and received by us or whatever the language should be here?
So moved.
Suck him.
Okay. Any other discussion? Oh, um, do we want to add as part of the motion that the the hearing will be April eighteenth?
That's fine.
Okay. Any other discussion ready for the vote? All those in favor of the motion in the April eighteenth public hearing, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. We'll see you in three weeks, Paul.
Okay, we thank you very much.
As far as that other the other, he can bring that into more. There didn't even need to check timers.
As long as we get it before, as long as we get the as long as we receive the fee before we vote.
I just didn't want to miss.
Right now, I we were in the book in the past. So as as long as he as long as we receive the payment before we sign the thing, we're we're good. I'm I'm happy. Okay, so I will I'll send out the letters and do the things. Yeah, there's only there's only a few butter for that one. That one's that one's not a not a big list.
Are you muted, Barb? Barb, are you muted?
No, she's not.
She's not.
Her sound went away. This happened at a board meeting the other night. She had to disconnect and reconnect.
Is there somebody coming in for that? Is there is just the?
I I don't know. Just coming back. That's better.
Okay. You know, I figured out what that is. It's a Bluetooth device in the household that cancels me out for some reason.
Interesting. Fighting back.
So we're good, right?
Yep, you're all set. We can hear you.
Okay, so Logan should be joining us in a few minutes. I told him around seven. He was gonna try to hop on early, so he should be popping on anytime for the housing survey discussion. Going down to the river corridor, the letter.
Oh, you're gone again, Barbara.
He goes.
It's bad.
No.
Please stand by. Should have did it before again. Back.
Okay, how's how's this? Is this better?
Yes.
For the time being. Okay, sorry about that. Um, so the the river corridor letters, they are ready. However, there is a bill in the Senate that may, if it passes, may require river corridors statewide. So it's 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 only gone through the the Senate is still has to get House passage. So we're not quite sure, but I I was gonna suggest we kind of just wait and see the results of that legislation. It's two thirteen, S two thirteen or two thirty-one. I forget right now, but I can get that to folks if you if you want to see that bill in action. So you know, if if that passes, it would influence the ordinance and maybe make our job a little bit different. Because it would be something in the regulations. It would take a couple of years for it to get through the rulemaking process and all of that kind of stuff. So you know, we may decide to wait for all that process, or we may decide to go ahead with this this ordinance or whatever we decide. Still no, still don't see Logan.
Do the minutes.
Well, we can now. Norm's here.
Andre, when Andres was at the meet board meeting on Tuesday, he was also talking about stormwater rules. And the state has made changes to their rules and those changes are going to require us to do some amendments to our stormwater ordinance.
Oh.
So there's some some things that are getting easier to manage. So they are there's there's some changes that are being made. So he's gonna give us, he's gonna get to me some what what that's gonna look like, but we are we are gonna have an amendment to our stormwater ordinance coming.
And that will have to go through the that will have to go through the whole process, planning commission.
Process, yeah.
Public hearings, select board, public hearing.
Very likely.
Hmm, okay. Anything else at the select board meeting, Bill? I missed that one.
Uh. Not anything major. We know that was that was that was the most notable thing that he's they they we have a grant that we received for them to do stormwater design work, which is part but but he's also got to do this for us because we got to roll this into our MS four permit. So there's a lot of a lot of stormwater stuff happening.
Okay. Okay, well, let's let's move down to the minutes of March seventh.
Excuse me a second. I'm having trouble seeing the select board. Is there only the four of us present?
There's there are five of us now. There are.
There are six of us total.
Yeah, six.
Logan's coming on.
Okay, let's.
Okay.
In the small in the in the select board boardroom, both Jim Hall and Jerry are present.
Okay. I can't see their face. I see Jim and Jerry. Okay, now I do. Okay.
Okay, well, let's we'll do the minutes in a second. Let's let Logan sign in here. And get.
Hello, everyone.
There you are.
Good evening.
Good, good timing, Logan.
I'm glad to hear it.
Yeah, we just just finished up on the subdivision stuff.
Great.
So let you catch your breath just for a second. And we'll we'll dive into the the housing survey that that you put together, you collected data on. And you had seventy-seven responses, some of those from from non-Rutland Town people. And why don't you just take it away from here? What else you found?
Yeah, well, first of all, thank you so much to the planning commission and the town in general for, you know, letting us do this survey. This is something we're hoping to replicate in other communities and really appreciative that you guys were the first one to take up this offer and it really to me kind of shows the value of this survey. I'll kind of just yeah, I'll kind of just walk through the the survey broadly and then just kind of give, you know, my interpretation of the significant findings and and, you know, suggested sites and different parts of this report. You know, the first thing I think I want to start off with is, you know, the surveys doesn't represent, you know, everybody at Rutland Town, right? So you know, it's approximately using the the decimal census and considering, assuming that everyone who said they were a resident of Rutland Town actually is a resident. It's about one point seven percent. So I think it's important to note, you know, the value of this survey is is the quality development, hearing from people, getting their input. And you have to kind of balance that with, you know, the sample size that it's not, of course, everybody. And yeah, I thought the so the so the first question was about, you know, are you a resident? And the second question was how important is building new housing in in Rutland Town? I think, you know, the the value of that question is kind of twofold. One is, you know, if you're kind of taking the survey and assuming it's representative of the town, I think it kind of gives you a rough sense of, you know, that most people think housing, building new housing in some form or fashion is at least somewhat important or very important. On the flip side, you know, I think this also could be used to say, yes, this is only one point seven percent of the town roughly. And so this also kind of speaks to the views of that one point seven percent so that, you know, most of them are, you know, want to see housing being built in some form or fashion. So that question could kind of be interpreted in multiple ways. And kind of depends on how you you view this survey. The the next question was about fair market rents in Rutland County. And maybe actually, you know, if if anything I say, you know, jumps out a question, you're by all means, just cut me off and ask the question, by the way. Yeah, so the next question was about fair market rents. And this, you know, fair market rents is is an indicator that's only done on a countywide basis. So it's a it's a little bit skewed, right? Because it's considering all of Rutland County. Granted, Rutland Town is one of the, you know, bigger municipalities in the region. And so, yeah, and and this kind of this response to me kind of showed that, you know, there's a there's a general want for a distribution of of housing prices, both below fair market rent, at fair market rent, above fair market rent. But there's also, in in my opinion, kind of looking at some of the questions that have to do with on the price of housing, definitely a general sentiment of, you know, having housing priced for people currently living in the community. I see there's a hand raised.
Yeah, Logan, before you go too far in question number, well, I guess it's number three. Can you go back to the the previous question? I just had a statistical observation that I just wanted to verify with you.
Yeah, absolutely.
On the first question, how important is building new housing in Rutland Town? Can I assume that the reason that the data show the same numbers is because the people who were not residents didn't didn't answer that question?
No, it's just that, you know, the distribution. So I think it was about, let's see what what it is. So about so there were seventy-seven total responses, twelve of them were non-residents.
Oh, my.
The you know, the the twelve people that were not residents, their their distribution was exactly the same as, so you know, about eighty percent of non-residents, the sentiment was the same, whether the residents, there were residents or were were not residents.
Okay, so it didn't it didn't change the statistics.
Right, yeah. And for for the fair market rents, the numbers were only now the fair market rents were different, but when you look at the pie charts, they seem very similar. And I wanted to kind of differentiate that for you, just so you could kind of see if there were changes between residents and non-residents.
Thank you.
That's a yeah, great question. And any other questions? Ready, I'll keep keep moving along. So yeah, that that was question three was what I was talking about with the fair market rents. And just that there's, you know, a general want for a diversity of housing prices. And question four, I think, was where this starts to get a little bit tricky. And I think also you know, some of the graphs, I think there's a little bit of nuance here. So question four was about housing types that were supported in Rutland Town. And so the green bars vary broadly. I was trying to just keep this simple was that, you know, are generally supported. And so I looked into it and and according to the twenty twenty-one census data, seventy-four percent of homes in Rutland Town are single-family homes or single-family detached homes. So that doesn't factor in like town townhouses, things. Um, so that doesn't factor in, um, like town, townhouses, things like that. Um, but, you know, basically, three out of every four homes, if, you know, in Rutland Town are single-family homes. So it wasn't too surprising that that was the one that kinda stood out. Um, but there is definitely, you know, um, kinda zooming in here, and these, these graphs are kinda tiny. I tried to fit it all on one page, but, um, you know, duplexes, orplexes, um, you know, courtyards, cottage courts, definitely townhouses, all of those, it seemed like there was general sentiment of supporting those. The live work was really interesting to me, um, where it seemed like people who chose the live work option, which is marked on that page in red, those people almost exclusively chose, um, live work and didn't choose any other options. Um, and in their responses, they went on to explain that they wanted those sites, um, those housing types, I mean, where typically commercial sites are. Um, so kind of where you would have, you know, typical commercial structures, but also having the, you know, first floor be, um, you know, a, a commercial establishment of some kind, and then having a residence on the second or third floor, if so, if, you know, however many floors. Um, and then here, I thought was also where there was a little bit more difference between Rutland Town residents and non-Rutland Town residents, where I, I, you know, kinda just broadly looking at it, it seemed like, um, Rutland Town residents, um, were more likely to support single-family homes and townhouses. And then the other category and no preference are in yellow. Um, so I think there's also a, a subset of people who frankly just, um, want more housing and their preferences, um, don't really, they, they don't really, doesn't really matter to them. And then on the flip side, I think there are people that are really want the planning commission to be very, you know, the town to be very diligent about this, um, in terms of using, um, you know, about sprawl and, um, using existing structures and trying to find attachments to existing structures or accessory dwelling units. Um, and that, some people also just frankly said that they didn't wanna answer the question because, um, Rutland Town, there's just so much diversity by location that they didn't really feel appropriate answering specific housing types, um, which kinda speaks to, you know, some, some flaws to this question as well, um, just kinda wanna caveat that, that's question four. Um, question five of the report, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, excuse me, when you said diversity, you're talking about diversity of population or diversity of house?
Yeah, the diversity, yeah, that's a great question, the diversity of the, the buildings themselves. Um, so, yeah, just that, the variety of, of, of housing types.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Hey, Logan? Logan, were you surprised that, that the numbers for townhouses, um, were higher than some of the other, um, multiple unit, um, dwellings?
Yeah, I, I, I was personally, and I, and that's something I wonder, you know, I'm familiar to the degree, but I'm not sure how, um, you know, popular townhouses are presently in, in Rutland Town. Um, so, yeah, that was kinda why I was wondering, yeah, that's a great question. So, yeah, I thought I was surprised. Um, cause I, I frankly, um, you know, I grew up actually in a townhouse. So, um, to me, I thought it was, is interesting because I've, I've had that experience. Um, but not something I think of when I think of, um, housing in Vermont, so, interesting kinda dynamic there. Um, yeah, question five was, um, you know, about, you know, the RRPC, um, and, you know, helping the town. Um, and I wanted to kinda phrase this in, in two different ways, um, which is that first, you want, you know, the RRPC's help, and, and there was no specifically that, like, we don't want housing help, um, cause we don't want more housing built in town. And I wanted, you know, that flagged so people could specifically voice that opinion if they had it. But also, um, you know, there's, there are some people, there was a sentiment, um, that I think is pretty clear in the survey too, is that, um, there isn't necessarily that there, people want help in identifying sites, but they also really want help with, um, specific sites that are already identified. And to be blunt, um, they're referring to the Diamond Run Mall. Um, like all, all the responses that answered, um, we want housing help, but we have sites that we've already identified. All those responses then went on to elaborate and say, the Diamond Run Mall was the site we want help with. Um, but most people want help with, want the town to take up this opportunity, um, in terms of both identifying new sites and, you know, working with existing sites. Um, yeah, and, you know, that maybe is also a good point there, right? So some people are, are kind of not a hundred percent sure what the opportunity is, but even when you take out the maybes, it's still a majority of the survey.
The, the owner of the Diamond Run Mall property is coming back to discuss with the board on April twenty-third, his progress. So we, we, I get, I get a lot of phone calls about that as well, and have to clarify that the mall is not public, is not town property, so.
Right. Yeah, that's a, that's a good point, I guess, I didn't even realize that there might not be that understanding. The, the next one is this map, um, this would have been, I think, let's see, would have been this. Yeah, that, this question, the, how this map ended up forming was, the question was about vacant properties. And, um, you know, this ended up being kinda lumped into some people just talking about sites they wanted to see housing, and some of it did have to talk about, um, vacant properties to a degree. Um, I think what's really important here to, to note is that, um, you know, there were, I wanna say, somewhere around twenty-plus parcels that were identified. Um, and in two areas broadly, um, and that's represented by circles in these maps. And what I think was, you know, interesting, going back to the Diamond Run Mall, was, you know, how only, all of these parcels mapped, except for the Diamond Run Mall, it was only a couple people mentioning these sites. And then the Diamond Run Mall was, you know, four out of every ten people, basically, um, that mentioned that. So, you know, I, I don't know how surprising that really is, but, um, and I think, you know, when I'm looking at this, why I ended up going with the, um, the town's future land use map is, you know, that's something where the town's already kinda looked at, um, you know, where, uh, different areas of town, what, where they want the future of that land. And, and I think it's kind of interesting looking at some of these clusters of parcels. Um, so you know, south of Rutland City, um, that, that cluster there, um, I think that is largely commercial and, um, working lands. And I, and I know over there, I think in both of those cases, there's some wetlands, um, and some flood hazards there, which definitely makes, um, developing that a little bit tricky. Um, north of Rutland City, kinda straight north, I think it's, it's a mix of, um, commercial. And then as you keep going north, I think it switches more to, to working lands. And I think that's a, I think there's a question there of, um, and this is something I think is, a lot of towns are, are wondering is, um, areas that are kind of, have been kind of considered, like lands that, that wanna be commercial? Do we wanna keep those lands commercial? Do you wanna, should that kinda switch more to housing? Um, I think that's a conversation to potentially have, um, you know. And, yeah, so, you know, I think different parcels, there's different considerations. And I think part of this could be looking at, um, you know, I could kinda go and look at, on all these parcels and see how many of these are constrained by, um, steep slopes or wetlands, or a lot of the things that could emerge in the permitting process. Um, that's, that's an opportunity to kinda see the feasibility of these sites. Yeah, Barbara?
Um, yeah, the, the circled areas, uh, Route four east and business Route four. Are, are you saying that four or less people suggested those circled areas?
Hmm, yeah, so the, the circled areas? No, so the circles were more, um, I think in, I think it was two people for each circle, basically just broadly characterized that area. Um, and, you know, they didn't, they, like, they were, what, they were like, I don't know where, but it would be great if there was some housing there, um, and that was kinda the degree. Cause I specifically made the survey verbiage broad, because, um, some people, some people got really specific and gave me, you know, the parcel ID, some people, it was like, the parcel next to here, you know, it was, it was enough. And, um, some people though kept it very broad, this street, this neighborhood, that sort of thing. Um, and so that's, that's how the circles emerged. But, yeah, every, every, both the circles and the highlighted parcels in yellow, um, all of those, except the Diamond Run Mall, were mentioned four or less times. And I believe, um, I could, I could go and look back, but I could probably identify for you, you know, the ones that were mentioned like three or four times versus the ones that were mentioned once or twice, if that'd be helpful.
They'd be in the spreadsheet you gave us, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's just a matter of, um, you know, kinda playing with the data and, and, yeah. The, is there any more questions on the, the map or the sites or anything like that? Great, um, the last question is, I think, you know, out of, out of this report, um, you know, I think the last question, you know, what I wrote there is, is really tough to go and take, you know, forty or, so there were, there were seventy-something responses, this was an optional question. And I think more than half of people used this opportunity to say something. Um, and so, you know, calling, I originally was gonna provide all the responses and then, um, you know, you put that on a piece of paper and you realize it's very overwhelming, um, for, for anyone reading it. So I did try to call it down, but, um, this is kinda my broad takeaways, which was, um, you know, lots of people talking about the price of housing and the need for housing price for people in town to afford it. Um, definitely just the sentiment that there's little burnt building going on and that just like, it would be great for more housing to come online. Um, definitely though, also a sentiment about not wanting to promote sprawl, um, and finding ways to do that, whether it's using existing buildings or infrastructure or, you know, building accessory dwelling units. Um, there was also, um, and there was a really good comment that sticks out to me when I think of this one, but, um, there were definitely people also talking about not wanting to ruin Rutland Town's character. Um, and, you know, about the, it being, being important that there aren't cookie cutter housing types and that, you know, um, someone said something along the lines of like, Rutland Town's where you wanna get away from the hustle and bustle, but you still wanna be like somewhat near, you know, things you need. And I thought that was, you know, uh, an important, an important sentiment. Um, something to me that I think was, um, pretty surprising and significant that emerged a couple of times was people saying that there should be a focus on Rutland City, um, which I think there is to a degree already, but that, you know, if there's opportunities for the town to collaborate with the city, to build housing in the city because it directly, you know, benefits Rutland Town, that that's something that the town should look into, um, which wasn't something that came to my mind, but this sort of, um, collaborative nature is part of the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, so I thought that was great. Um, and, yeah, also sentiments just about, um, you know, certain amenities, um, to draw young families and, um, you know, the want to draw young families and what that requires. Um, and, you know, kind of the importance, like recreation being tied to that. Um, and then there was also just a sentiment, um, that the housing stocks being converted to Airbnbs. And, and what's interesting to me is, um, the state has data on Airbnbs that they get from a third party, um, this data analytics company. So I did, I did look into this, Rutland Town, because there's Rutland Town and Rutland City, and then there's like Rutland. The data gets really, um, the state's data, I think, is wrong. Um, so like the state basically says there's like zero Airbnbs in Rutland Town. Um, and I think that's just because of how this website goes about categorizing homes in Rutland City and Rutland Town. So I, you know, I had an Airbnb account poked around and it seemed like it was more than zero, but I think it's hard to say exactly what, um, you know, to what degree. Um, and maybe there are other data sets, yeah, Barbara?
Yeah, we just passed the short-term rental ordinance.
Oh, right, yeah.
Planning commission and select board, it hasn't gone into effect yet, it's a few more weeks away. Uh, but Bill's been keeping tabs on that and there's probably closer to twenty, twenty-five short-term rentals.
About thirty, so I, I reached back out to the vendor that would, may help, may help us source the ones specifically in town. And his count right now is about thirty-one.
Gotcha.
Yeah, and, and so Logan, most of these comments about Airbnbs, were they, were they across the board, like, it's okay that this is part of the mix? Or not okay?
I, yeah, I got more of the sentiment that, um, and, and this is, I always find this kind of interesting dynamic, just, you know, Rutland County being, um, you know, broadly as a county, there's definitely, you know, seasonal interest. But to me, it seemed more, um, that Airbnbs are constraining the year-round housing supply that, you know, the present year-round housing supply is being converted. And this is, this is something that is, um, you know, occurring across the country with websites like Airbnb Rising. Um, it's not unique, um, to Rutland County or Rutland Town or Vermont for that matter. Um, so, yeah, I think that's sort of, um, the sentiment more that I got. The individual comments I put here were ones that I just thought kind of, um, you know, were worth considering, which was that, um, you know, Rutland Town, um, doesn't, doesn't have zoning, you know? Um, and so there's, you know, appreciation for that, there was actually one comment though, that I think wanted zoning, and I, you know, it was, it was an interesting dynamic there, but it was more, more people saying, don't create zoning, um, or like, continue to not have zoning. Um, another idea was that, um, if the fire police department has a vacant property list, that was something I hasn't, hadn't thought of, um, but that was in response. Gotcha, that's a quick answer, thank you. Um, yeah, so that checks off that one. Um, just the idea that neighbors should work together, um, and, you know, there's sometimes often, and when, when building housing, sometimes it's a, you know, neighbors end up kind of opposing each other, disagreeing, but if there's a way for neighbors to work together, I'm not really sure how the town would facilitate that, but, um, there was, you know, a need for more pet-friendly housing. Um, someone mentioned that they can't hire employees because of housing. Um, and then there were just some questions, um, can Rutland Town handle more people? Can Rutland Town ensure developers meet the, the town's needs? Um, and this is just kind of broad, and there are definitely other comments, you know, if you, you go through that Excel spreadsheet I provided, um, in addition. And then the last point here is just, um, you know, the, the last thing I'll mention here is just that, um, you know, the survey is done through our Housing Resource Navigator program, and we've put together a housing resource guide. Um, and this is really kind of what we're calling a one-stop shop for anyone that's looking to, to build housing or do any home improvements. Um, so it, it has all these different, um, quote-unquote, resources, um, really, really opportunities that can kinda help, um, you know, landowners make these improvements, build housing if they'd like. Um, includes like project management support, all these different databases that are kinda helpful, um, guidebooks. Um, there's also funding resources that can help, kinda help lower development costs. So development costs in Vermont are rising really, really quickly. Um, so this is becoming increasingly important to kinda get these, um, variety of funding streams if landowners wanna make certain improvements. And there's also just, um, a list of helpful things that people know what regulations and, um, requirements they have to go through depending on what project they're working on. Um, so I'll just plug this, that we are planning on, um, you know, kinda having a, a flyer posted in parts of Rutland Town and across the region, um, that just kinda promote this guide. Um, and it's, you know, it's a free online guide, um, so that's something that the, that the RRPC plans to do in Rutland Town. Um, and I just threw that in on the last page as well, um, of this, this, this survey, if anyone's interested. Yeah, that's, any, any, any other questions? Um, I'm trying to think, I guess the, the big, yeah, first, if there are any other questions, but I guess the large takeaway is really.
Logan, I, I think Norm has a question.
Oh, go for it.
Thank you, well, first, thank you for your work here, uh, it, uh, sort of, uh, it, it's a good place to start. Uh, the question I had relates to some statistics you gave way back in the beginning. I think you said there were seventy-seven responses and fifteen of them were from non-residents. Was that correct?
Yeah, there is seventy-seven, so it's eighty-four percent of survey responses identified as Rutland Town residents.
Well, I, when I calculated, when I divided, maybe I did the wrong thing. Fifteen over seventy-seven, I got fifteen percent were not, so that, I guess that's eighty-five, you're right, alright.
Yeah, yeah.
Given that the participation was so minimal, in terms of absolute numbers, um, how valuable do you, as somebody that does this every day, uh, view this?
Yeah, I think that's, that's a, a great point. Um, it's something I think shouldn't be considered in isolation, right? Um, you know, this is one point seven percent of the town's population roughly, um, you know. It's something that, it's, it, I think it, it, it has some weight, um, but I don't think it's something that has all the weight, I guess, is, is what I, I would say. Um, so, so some, one thing to me that I think is, is worth thinking about in terms of like other statistics, um, which is, like, so basically, the, the short answer to your question, which is that, um, this should be considered, but it should also be considered with, you know, larger, the, the larger context of the town, both in terms of, you know, um, you know, other meetings that go on, other, other conversations you all are having, and the larger, I guess, like, data context of the town. Um, so, you know, roughly three out of every four homes in Rutland Town are single-family detached homes. Um, I, I also found- Um, I I also found that, um, seventy-one percent of households in Rutland Town in twenty twenty had one or two people. But, um, roughly one, I, yeah, I got this this data point here too. Um, one thousand two hundred and twenty-nine homes, at least in twenty twenty-one, apparently have three or more bedrooms. So, you know, most people, most households, one or two people, most homes, um, you know, three plus bedrooms. Um, so that data point in and of itself, regardless of the survey, speaks to me of, you know, encouraging. Um, taking these big single family homes that have too many bedrooms and, um, you know, splitting them into a duplex. Um, so that two, two households that are, you know, like the average Rutland Town household could live in them. Um, that to me, you know, and that also kind of speaks to the sentiment of not wanting to encourage sprawl, um, wanting to keep the character. Um, you know, the rural character the same. Um, so I think it's, it's, you know, that's an example, I think, where it's like. You take the context of the town, um, conversations you're having, the work you're doing as planning commission. You take this survey and and give it the weight you think it it could be worth, and then you consider the data. And, you know, how the trends are changing, both in Rutland Town and, you know, Rutland County and, you know, Vermont and the US in general. Because some, a lot of these trends are also, um, a symptom of of national trends. So it's, 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 I don't know how how great of an answer that was, but.
You know, I hate to exercise my rather rusty lawyer skills, because I've been retired for five years. But I can't resist asking a follow up question.
Yeah.
And, um, that is. You said something about. Just significant number of the households in Rutland Town had one or two occupants. But the households were three or more bedrooms.
Yeah, the homes, the homes themselves, so like the actual nature of the present housing stock. Or single family homes that largely have three or more bedrooms.
And one.
There's that sort of mix match.
And one or two occupants.
Right, yeah.
My question is, does that indicate a decrease in the population of Rutland Town?
Yeah, no, I think it's, it's. It, I, my, my general sense, and this is, this is across Rutland County, and this phenomenon is pretty much ubiquitous in in all of Rutland County, which is that. Um, you have, you have families in a single family home that, um. Have have, and I actually didn't check this number, so I don't know a hundred percent this is true for Rutland Town, but I do know it's true for Rutland County, which is that. Population's not necessarily shrinking, but what's happening is is that you have fam- families, still families, but, um, you know, the children are 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 of an older age. Um, and and so they move out of the house, but they might not necessarily move out of the house like they move. Um, you know, super far away, they might just get their own place. They're just old enough. And so what we're noticing on a countywide scale, and I could, I could check this for you in terms of Rutland Town specifically, is that. The population on a broad scale countywide is roughly the same, but the number of households. Um, are increasing and the the average or median household size is shrinking. And so we're seeing more one or two person households, but we're seeing more households and roughly the same people. I don't, does that make sense?
Sort of.
Yeah, miss.
It's, thank you very much. I'm sorry to take up so much time, but.
No, these are great questions.
Any questions there in the the office? Town office? Logan, if if we were to come up, um, if we were going to take this a step further. And maybe come up with a list of sites or that that we thought would be appropriate. What would be, what would you do with that? What would be your next steps?
Yeah, so, um, mainly, essentially what we're doing is, um, through a variety of methods, one being the survey where. Um, you know, kind of gauging residents' opinions, but essentially what we're doing is we're identifying sites. Um, we're working with the landowners saying, hey, um, you know, for X, Y, and Z reasons, we think, um. This site would be great for housing, um, and, you know, if the landowners are interested, um, we're, we're trying to reach out to developers. Um, and essentially trying to get some sort of agreement, um, in hopes that the the developers will be, um. You know, building housing that fits, um, the wants and and needs of of the community. Um, and so essentially, by doing this on a countywide scale, we're getting sites, um, in different towns. It makes it easier for us to go and and talk to to developers of of varying, um, you know. Um, scales in terms of, um, scales and expertise. Um, so some of them, you know, are very, very small, um, and some of them are are. We will be reaching out to some of these larger, um, Vermont and and northern New England and in New England developers and trying to get a sense of. Um, if their interest in the region, and then, you know, having these sites and and having this information is kind of useful so that when, you know, if they are interested. Um, we, we actually have sites and and landowners, um, interested in on board and, um, I am aware that, um, the sites. South of Rutland City on Route Seven, um, that cluster, that two. I think it's technically three parcels, but basically that cluster, all those landowners are aware, um, that, and I think. Definitely the southernmost parcel is on the market currently. Um, so I just, just want to flag that, and that and that kind of goes back to, you know, some of these sites are just. People's random ideas, and then some of these are a lot more, um, thought out by residents who actually are like, no, I I went online and I saw that this specific site is on the market. Um, and it has been on the market for, um, you know, however long. Um, and I'll mention, this is one thing I didn't mention, and I'm actually not sure if this person, and. Could go back and check if this person checked off they were a resident in Rutland Town, but I did speak with one person who, um, is. You know, has just kind of broadly interested, um, in, you know, building housing and, um, really very. She's she's formerly homeless, um, so she's also, um, wants to address, um, you know, issues with homelessness as well. I mean, so she, she had some information too, because she was constantly checking and seeing what was and wasn't on the market. Um, so I just wanted to flag that as well, um, and that was the one phone call that was mentioned in that report. So that would be the next step, though.
Dana.
So Logan, I heard you say a couple of things and it was jelling in my mind. You mentioned reconsidering how we use our existing housing stock and and converting multi. Uh, or single family dwellings that are oversized for the residents. You were talking about twelve hundred properties that were, that had three plus bedrooms, but only. A a a large majority of those only had one or two residents. Uh, and you're talking about, uh, we are talking about generally statewide, a housing shortage. I'm wondering if we can reframe the question. It's not about a housing shortage so much as a housing deployment. And, uh, what I mean by that is that the houses that seem to jump out in your report. Indicate that the, uh, their capacity is seriously underutilized. And so maybe a conversation could be held or an exploration could be held. Around how how to address that particular phenomenon. Or that particular set of data points. What could could we do, um, in that same line? If if we're looking at people in budgets and helping them to maximize their value for the dollar. It is always easier to share, uh, you know, multiple renters sharing. A a larger home where they, you could have four or five people if they all have a bedroom. Uh, more easily than if each person is going out and renting their own efficiency apartment.
Right.
I I mean, that might be a shift in the type of, uh, living situations, but I know that other countries. Uh, explore that, and and maybe even on the West Coast. You know, there are, you know, uh, co-rental arrangements where. That there's a communal space and then everybody has, uh, an individual private space. So, I mean, I I I don't know, is that something that we're, uh, uh, interested in pursuing? Is that something that might be beneficial to, uh, younger? Uh, families, uh, maybe two families could share a house or something, or maybe it could be a duplex and they have a common. They they have a common area. I have no idea.
Right.
Actually, the, uh, up in Quebec, they were, uh, exploring some of this as well. So maybe, maybe that's something we can put on the intermediate term. Uh, agenda for looking at and surveying people about their feelings and how, and what that might look like. And then we might have property owners to say, oh, you know what? I could downsize. I I can take a townhouse that's half the size of my house instead of having. I don't know, uh, nineteen hundred square feet, I can go down to twelve hundred square feet or something like that. I'm making this up, but, uh, that way, there would be interest in, you know, selling the property, buying something. Uh, downsizing as people are are aging, and if they can live in a smaller space, then, uh, perhaps that frees that up to be renovated.
Yeah.
You know, and then that might fit into that, uh, woman's vi- vision of what Rutland Town could be in terms of. Having more housing stock to address needs of, uh, people who are. Homeless for whatever reason. I mean, the biggest reason that people might not be able to afford. A home is because of the, uh, the the cost for an individual or small number of people.
Yeah.
Or.
There's, there are a few things there that, um, I can kind of speak to your point too, which is that. One, um, what you're talking about is definitely, um, a rising trend. I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure about Rutland County, but definitely in Vermont, um, in the US, um, generally, um, with this sort of, um. You know, more people living together. Um, there's also interestingly, uh, interesting trend of, um. Multi-generational where you have, um, you know, someone who has a single family home, their their kids have moved out. Um, and they have this big home, but they they love their home. They've been there for decades. Um, you know, why, why, why move the place that you have all these memories? Um, but on the, on the flip side, you have a big home that you have to take care of, you might have a big lawn, et cetera. Um, and then there are young people who are are looking for a housing. So there's, there's this interesting dynamic happening where there are young people. Coming in, living with, living, um, you know, someone like myself in their twenties, um, who not, might not be able to afford a home. Um, would sort of want that, that, that feel, um, and it helps the person who's. Who's an older adult and they can do some of the the more manual labor, they can take out the trash, um, things like that. And, um, so I think your point is is spot on. Um, and I would, I would say sort of, um. To your first question about, um, how can we sort of encourage that? That's sort of, um, a big part of the Housing Resource Guide I mentioned, um, and giving those sorts of, um, what is needed. Um, you know, if landowners are interested in taking those steps, um, but that's, that's something we've been thinking about too, is is trying to understand. Um, to what degree people are are willing to do that sort of home sharing in multi-generational living. Um, and what is the role of both us as the RPC and the towns, um, to do that? I know there are basically, like, we're, we're just kind of hard to understand, like, or or towns and the Rutland Regional Planning Commission, is that something like, is it our role to promote that? Or is it more, um, I think that's, that's something that you bring up that we're personally not, something we've been talking about in the office, I guess. Um, me and my boss, um, about what that role is, um. So, yeah, it's it's a, it's a great point, though. Um, and there are websites that do exist, um, where people go. And I'm not sure what they're, they're called. This is something I I learned about, um, when I started this job. Um, so I'd never even heard of this idea, but there there definitely are websites that exist. I don't know how popular they are in the region. Um, where you, where there are home sharing sites where you could go and say, hey, I, I have this property at this place and. I'm looking for someone to live with me and, and, you know, there's, I'm pretty sure it has all these dynamics of a contract and things like that. Um, you know, that's all built into the software. Yeah, great point.
Great, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Logan?
I have a comment. Has, has your work taken you into any historical, uh, research? What went on here, say fifty, sixty years ago in the town and the city area?
Yeah, I've looked at, um, not specific to Rutland Town. So I guess the short answer would be no, I I've definitely looked at kind of, um, sub-regional population trends, I guess. Um, but I haven't necessarily went town by town and and looked. I do know kind of broadly. Um, what happened, but I think you're getting at a good point here, which is history matters.
You you really need to look at it. Um, particularly in the industrial. Scope. As, as town and city. Uh, I'm thinking in particular how how Richardson scales. Went out of here about, oh, sixty years ago. Uh, Maltool went out. More business forums went out. Tambrands went out. And there's, uh, Metro Mail. Went out. And most of these were. Good paying jobs at the time. And some of these operations were in the town, some were in the city. And people worked back and forth to, in other words, Rutland Town people would go into the city to work and. Uh, some of the city people would come into the town to work. And because those businesses, no industrial, uh, operations have have left. You've got, you've got housing. For instance, over in the center of Rutland where I live. Um, there's a lot of houses up that street that were built by Vermont Marble Company. Well, Vermont Marble Company has been gone for eons.
Right.
And you're really gonna take a look at these things to get an answer. And this is the reason why everything happens. Sometimes it's pretty hard to come to a, 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 a conclusion, but there is a reason. And, uh. I think if, if you're going to make some major, uh, recommendations and. Uh, what recommendations and ideas to the. The city and the town and the county for that matter. Yeah, I don't know what the historical events have been. That brought the town or the municipality to where it is today.
Right. No, I think you're, you're, you're definitely right there, um, and sort of speaks to that sort of, um, interrelated nature. Um, between jobs and 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 housing, right? So once, you know, as you put it, once the, once they're all gone, right, there's, um. Then there's that sort of housing dynamic there. Um, I think it's, it's definitely, um, you know, a a good point too about thinking about. Um, you know, where we're, we're viewing the economic trends in in Rutland Town. Um, and how that, you know, is inherently linked to, um, how much housing or how little housing is needed. Yeah. But I think, I I think you're right, there's definitely, um, more to to look at there, um, to really get a better understanding.
Any other comments or questions? Jerry, I, you're very small on my screen, so. Can't see. Anything else?
Say thanks to Logan for, uh. Uh, presenting the information in a way that we could, uh, uh, discuss it and. And understand, uh, the nature of the survey and the type of responses and get a glimpse into the. The i- i- importance given by those who responded. And as with any survey. Uh, I mean, it would have been nice to have a slightly larger sample, but it does represent, uh, in some way, the interest of, uh, the town as a whole. And so I just want to thank, say thanks for doing that for us, and you had great graphics, by the way.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Yeah, Logan, you can stick around and and watch some sausage making if you want, as we hash this out. Or, or you can call it a day.
Might, I might stick around, sure.
Okay.
Then then you're gonna give the true picture of what we do to the, to the regional com-
Then, then you're going to give the true picture of what we do to the, to the regional com. Commission and not the colored one that Barbara delivers, right?
No.
Yes. He's here to verify.
Oh, yeah.
Well, thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Um.
On the agenda now.
I'm sorry, Dana.
Where are we on the agenda now?
Well, we're on the discussion part of the housing survey. Um, and and what we want to do next. I was thinking, um, don't know what the rest of the group thinks about this, but uh and I don't know what you think about this, Dana. But do you and I want to get together and maybe come up with some proposals to bring to our next meeting?
Happy to join you if that's what you'd like.
How does this sound to others?
Well, uh, if we are going to do that, I, I would ask for a very brief brainstorm so that we have some direction. From the rest of the group. So if we could take two minutes even. Just to get down some ideas of what people are thinking. That would, that would be helpful for me.
Yeah, good idea.
My sense is that. We have a lot of data. To absorb here. And um. I'm not sure. I have very many thoughts, I think. Yeah, I'm concerned with the size of the sample as I expressed before, but I don't have. I, I don't have a sense of a grip on any specific thing that this tells me. It's just my sense. So I don't think I can be any of any help. In that.
Okay, well, let's just go around the horn. Um, get people's perspectives here. Um, Howard, you're on. You're in the next Hollywood Square of my horn.
Yeah, I, I really don't. Have anything that I feel that I could have at this point, Barb. Um. Discussion's been good. But I don't, I don't have any magic things to. To talk about.
Okay. Jim?
What's up?
Nothing more?
No.
Okay, okay. Jerry? Anything?
No. I'm with Howard.
Okay, well, um, do we want to take a next step?
What do you have in mind for our next step walk?
Well, I, I thought, you know, maybe a couple of us could look at the data a little more closely and. See, s- see if there were some patterns we could pull out. Or. Maybe take some, make some decisions about where the planning commission can. Can land on this in promoting certain sites or types of housing. And such. That would be one alternative.
Well, the one thing that. That stands out, not necessarily. From this survey, but. From. The history of several years of. Various forms of data. And various undertakings that we have, the studies that we participated in. Is. How does this fit into the concept of more concentrated housing? Building a village center or. Uh, a town center. Uh, with town hall. Is sort of with that area. Um, that seems to me to be one thing. That we talked about it, perhaps in terms of energy efficiency. And cluster housing and closer to town and that kind of thing and. Uh, if. Maybe. Taking a look at it at this data from that perspective, was that the scoping study we did it was done for us at one time? It just always stuck out in my mind. I think you used the term village center. Uh, in those discussions and for some reason that stuck and. Uh. All that work we did several years ago and was done for us as well. Uh. Maybe trying to measure. How this fits into some of that. And whether we can tie it together a little bit and into something. Of a clearer vision for the future or recommendations. Maybe one way to go.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I got.
Barbara, uh, Jerry's got a question or a thought.
So I guess, I guess, I guess just a comment without, without beating a big thing. I, I, I think Jim. Was pretty much spot on. What, what in the hell is drawing people with no jobs to Rutland Town? I mean, I'm sorry, I sit here and I listen to all this and what we ought to be talking about. Is how we can actually get some jobs here, then there might be a need for some housing. I mean. Wh- tell me, tell me what the need for housing is. Does anybody have a specific amount of people that are? Out there looking for housing right now? I mean. You've got to have a reason to have people here. And I, I think we're all very fortunate that we live here. I love Vermont, I love to be here. I don't like the trend where it's going. Further and further and further away and all, all, you know, many people talk about this uh. Uh, global warming. Where's Killington going to be in twenty years? I mean, that's about all we got here. So these, all these other businesses have been taken away with really literal or no interest by the state of Vermont to, to. Increase that. I mean, you, the taxes go up, but for what? It's, it's, I, I would like to see the planning commission talk about, you know, more often than not, talk about starting with. Building the structures that would get people here and then we can talk about the structures to house them. I mean, I think development would happen. If there were jobs. It would happen. There would be developers that'd be interested. I, I can't imagine a developer right now wanting to put a bunch of. Low, y- you can't, there is no affordability in low-income housing unless the state's funding it. There's just, I, I, I work in these, I work in this trade. It is, you know, the building on behind uh Jones's Donuts? I think it was part of, is that Saint Peters?
IHM, I think.
IHM, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars a unit. That's what those cost. You, you, who's gonna, who can afford that? The state of Vermont, maybe, because they, we all paid for them. But I, I, I just think that there's a lot of really. There, there's a lot of wishful thinking here and I hope that it goes in a great direction, but I think we've got to start with jobs. You know, we got to start with those and then all the infrastructure and all those other things are going to follow. And, and I think Jim brought up a great point about looking at the history. These houses were filled, my community where I live. Mostly sixty-seventies houses where things were still a little bit on the rise. And those people are getting older now. And many of the people in the community are still there, they're still the original owners, but now it's filling up a little bit with. With people with kids and things because those people are, are, are either passing on or having to move away. But I, I'd like somebody to show me where you're going to get developers to spend this kind of money unless there's a lot of money behind them because it's too damn expensive right now. But it, it would follow industry if there was some here.
So Jerry.
As I sat here and kept my mouth shut, I kind of finally bubbled over.
I, I knew it was coming, Jerry, I knew it was. Okay, Dana.
Thank you, Jerry.
Piggy, piggybacking on what Jerry said, uh, one of the things that I was writing down to talk to you about Barbara was. Identifying the questions. So our task, yours and mine, perhaps is just to identify those questions. Like some of the questions that Jerry raised. And uh outlining them. And then talking about connecting to our partners. In, in uh Rutland County on uh who represent uh businesses, industry, maybe the Department of Labor. And say. What is our demand for jobs? And who are we looking to have fill those jobs? We're talking entry-level positions? We're talking mid-career positions? What are we talking about? And then what are we talking about and index that to housing? Because to Jerry's point. Makes no difference if we're doing a housing plan with, with no target audience to actually serve. If we. Uh, meld both the job market with the housing stock. Then you have a coordinated approach to filling homes and filling jobs. Which will create economic activity for the region. And help bring. In greater prosperity, which. In turn will bring more interest in the area. More opportunity for growth. And more families to come in. So I think Jerry's got something there, but Barbara, I think our task is just to generate the questions. If you and I are going to sit down and do this as a subcommittee. We just generate whatever questions we can and identify the partners. That we would want to explore these questions with.
Mm-hmm.
How's that sound?
It sounds, yeah, yeah, that's, that makes a lot of sense. I'm just thinking, Mary, maybe we should include Mary Beth.
Yeah.
As well, just to get a, a slightly younger demographic involved in a, a family, a current family person. See if she'd be interested, but yeah, yeah, that's, that makes a lot of sense, Dana. I, I guess I'll entertain a motion. If we think we're. Ready to. Set two or three of us out off on this task.
Okay, Barbara, I will make a motion. To have the chair establish a subcommittee, an ad hoc subcommittee to explore the question of. Uh, next steps on the housing survey. With interested members from the planning commission.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, any, any other? Talk on this, any other discussion? Okay, I'll call the question, all those in favor of the motion of the, the um ad hoc subcommittee. On housing, say aye, please.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Any opposed? Okay. All right, we'll, we'll try to um, we'll try to get something uh for the next meeting.
So Barbara, just as a point of clarification, since so many of us are on virtually tonight. Uh, was that a unanimous vote? Based on Bill's perspective, since he's the one who has to uh generate the minutes?
That, that was my, that was my interpretation.
Okay, that, that's what I thought, but you know, in virtual space, who knows what you get.
Hard to sell.
Okay. Good discussion. All right, we'll leave housing and we just have one other item unless anyone else has any announcements, we kind of touched on that earlier. Um. But we can move down to the minutes of.
One thing I was going to start working on uh kind of updating the subdivision. Application forms. Um, just, just experience we've had over the last few. We're not getting, I don't think we're getting the information we want for a subdivision application such as. Like. How many parcels do you want when you're done? And well, how big are they and those kinds of things? Because when we, when you look at what the actual. Requirement is, we don't require, it, it, this, the subdivision ordinance does not require a survey. For an application, all it requires is at its most basic, a sketch.
Right.
Which. Could be. Uh, issue, so um. I was going to look at updating the forms to. Kind of gather what we are actually wanting. The forms that we use now are based strictly on. The carbon copies that used to be used at one point, I just turned them into digital forms. But there was, there was no, I didn't do any editing, just it was a four, three or four-part carbon copy and. That's what I used, so. Um, if, if anybody has things they, they would like to have on there that we can, we can ask. Um, send me a message and I'll, I'll see if I can start including them on a new, a new version.
Go ahead, Norm.
Um. Bill's comments triggered something. Bill, did I understand you to say that? The, a survey is not required? For subdivision?
Subdivision ordinance does not specifically say a survey is required and with the initial application.
Oh, with the initial application, but a survey is required. Before.
As a final plat, but we, we generally like to have a survey. Map is the beginning one, but we actually cannot require it because the ordinance does not require a survey in the initial application.
Would it make any sense to consider amending it? To do so?
Amending the ordinance? We're already in the process of that.
Right, adding that to the, I don't recall whether that was something we discussed that. Of, of making the, the survey an initial requirement.
Your, the ordinance. The submitted version to our town attorney has been with him for about five months now. And I don't know if we want to go and say, hold up, let's start over again, because you, you. You, you're free to look, I could, you, I think, I think everybody had a copy at one point of, of what we sent on, but. We, we, we cannot, the ordinance does not allow. Us to require a survey at the time of application.
Well. I guess it's up to the chair to think of a. Get some thought to whether, you know, if we've waited five months and, you know, we can't be.
Mm-hmm.
You know, apparently you're going to upset the apple cart to. Submit. Two lines or something of that nature, if that'll do it.
Yeah, we kind of ran into this, the last subdivision, the North Grove.
Yo.
Um.
As he said, it doesn't, you don't require, you can't require it, and he was absolutely correct. We, we could not tell him it was required.
Did anyone notice that that was uh one of the sites for housing?
Oh, yeah.
Some of that property. Go ahead, Dana.
Uh, I, I'm saying, uh, I'm seeing that we're in a kind of a catch twenty-two. Uh, and it doesn't have a simple. Answer. I, I understand what Bill's saying and I think that there's some logic to that. Which is intuitively. Useful from my perspective. However, the catch is that if we change the regulations and require the survey. First. And we decide that something else. Is needed that did not appear on the survey. Then they could go, they would go back and that would significantly increase their cost potentially.
And I'm thinking that's probably why it wasn't required to begin with, that a sketch plan was acceptable. Because if, if they came to the commission, the commission said, you aren't going to do this. Just no to the application, they could have spent a substantial amount of money to create a survey that was essentially worthless.
Exactly, right.
I, I, I'm pretty sure that that was the intention of. Why it not being singularly required at the onset.
So. Um, like, my question is, is, is there some? Is there a way to navigate? Those, I'll call them competing interests. That would allow.
Survey, a survey is prefer, a per, survey preferred could to be, you know, a sketch plan or survey which is preferred, you know, we, we can. Change the wording on the application. Short of saying it's required because it, it wouldn't, I don't think we, I don't think we should, being just based upon that, you never know that somebody could try to do something that's not really allowed, so. We, that, that's, that can kind of get a substance to some detail wording, but. I think. We could say, you know, like it's worded now, a sketch plan or survey, you know, in parentheses, preferred, can, you know, to be, to be provided, you know, but not, but it's not required.
Right, but that's not currently in, in there, correct?
The, the language dates back to the eighties on this application. This is, this is not, there's no, really no updating.
Right, but what you're proposing right now is not currently in the existing language, right?
Correct.
So I mean, maybe that's the, maybe that's the way to go and this can be something.
Yeah. And, and I didn't mean to make this a long conversation for tonight, but just. If you have some thoughts about, you know, what, how, how we want to do that, but we do have to stick within the confines of what we actually can require.
Right, right.
We can say a survey is preferred, though.
Oh, we, we sure could, sure. But, and we can also, uh, but I was thinking of, you know, we, we talked about a while ago, but adding. That we would like a digital copy of whatever they submit, so that way we can reduce the paper files that we have to keep and. Because a lot of these files, if we have them digitally, we don't need paper copies anymore, like it's just taking up space.
Right, right, it would help the.
I, I would, I would support that.
Uh, shouldn't it be like? Wouldn't it be like a? A survey is preferred and will be required to, so that they know that they're going to need it anyway.
And, and I think that's, that, that's what comes out of like this meeting tonight. How do you not, how he brought a sketch plan, we're like, okay, then you need to bring us.
Right.
Then at the final hearing is when they. Then at the final hearing is when they bring a survey.
Right.
And that's why they get ninety days from then to bring a Mylar, because you've, you, you brought us, say you just drew a sketch. We say, okay, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna say yes. Then at the hearing, we get a survey and the survey looks good. And then they, they make that the Mylar.
Right, like this certainly made it easier for us.
Absolutely, absolutely. And most will do, but like Eric's yeah, your comments last time was that you don't require it. And he's absolutely right. We don't, we, we can't require it, but I, the night, so you have, you have the sketch plan, then you could, which you make the survey at the final hearing. And if you sign off on that, the final hearing, they have ninety days to make the Mylar. So that's, that's why those timelines are there, but we, we don't have the requirements of that. But I think since these forms were created, I'm, I'm guessing somewhere around twenty-something years ago, things have changed a little bit. So.
And well, we didn't have digital services back then anyway.
No.
Now, now we do, and that makes everything much easier. And for us who are virtually uh meetings, it would be so easy for us to be able to pull that out and be referenced. Uh, and you could pull it up, Bill, in the select boardroom and, and show it on the screen, which I know we've done in some cases.
Even, even beyond that, like we can have a digital database. People like, oh, I want, I need to see a subdivision record. Great, just go online, it's there. And like all the forms are there because we just upload them and we don't need to keep paper anymore.
Right.
So.
So I, I mean, that, that would be something I personally would wholeheartedly support.
How about, um, yeah, I, 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 I think we need to prod our town attorney a little bit. And um to get some sort of answer. How about if we give them just this minimal new language to add? And, and maybe a deadline.
The, the, this language is, is, we, we, this would be on the application. It wouldn't be part of the ordinance. We were talking, the, when we're talking about changing the ordinance was about requiring, requiring a survey at the onset.
Right.
I don't, we really want to do that. The or, the ordinance talks about the things that they have to provide us. But the application can, can, we have a little more flexibility in application.
But we also talked about some languages that a survey would be, be preferred and would be required.
Required at the final hearing, not at the initial hearing.
Yeah.
But, and that's already in there.
But is the preferred part in there?
The preferred part, the, 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 the ordinance doesn't talk about the application process. Really, like I, I, I'll, I'll look at it, but I, I don't, I don't think it actually like lists the actual language the application does. So I think we can add the preferred part for the survey to the application and be okay. But I, I'll, I'll, I'll take a look at it and and see what we see, what we come up with. And we'll bring it up next meeting.
Okay. And you, you'll contact the town attorney one more time?
I will do my best.
Okay. Okay, anything more on this? Let's finish up uh with the minutes from March seventh.
Move to approve the minutes of March seventh.
Okay.
Second.
Thanks, Jerry.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the minutes of March seventh, please say aye.
Aye.
Close.
I abstain, I abstain because I was not at the meeting.
Okay. All right, anything else for a meeting tonight? Okay. A motion to adjourn is in order.
So move.
Thanks, Jim. And a second by Dana. Okay, we're adjourned.